Community meeting for Monday, November 25th, 2024. I am Ward One City Council Bernie Schultz, and I'm hosting the meeting. Tonight, I have invited Fitchburg Housing Authority Executive Director Doug Bushman and Senior Land and Climate Associate Ryan Henrichus from the Nashville River Watershed Association. I don't think I pronounced that last name very well, but maybe next time. They're going to both make presentations and they're going to answer questions. Doug has got some exciting news about the Wallace Towers, high-rise building in Fitchburg, Wallace Ave. And Ryan will be talking about the Fitchburg Green Solutions Project, a grant that Fitchburg has from the Environmental Protection Agency. So we're going to start with Ryan. Take it away, Ryan.
All right. Thank you, Bernie. So as we just said, we're going to be talking a little bit about the Fitchburg Green Solutions Project tonight. Again, my name is Ryan Henrichus from the Nashville River Watershed Association. So just to jump right into it, here's an overview of this project that we got. The full title is the Fitchburg Green Solutions Project: Nature-Based Solutions to Climate Impacts in Fitchburg, Massachusetts. And the big goal here is to build out a couple of projects, at least three, within the city of Fitchburg to address some of the flooding issues, as well as access to open space, better air quality, and heat issues that we get in the city. Our methods here will be to use so-called "nature-based solutions." These will be things like riparian buffer zones, rain gardens, bioswales, things of this nature, which we'll get into in a moment. The major project partners on this are ourselves, the Nashville River Watershed Association, based out of Groton, Massachusetts. We've been doing work here in Fitchburg for many, many years, since the 1960s. And Fitchburg was actually sort of the -- and the situation with the river back in the day was kind of our raison d'etre. And so we also are working closely with the EPA, U.S. EPA, who is the main funder for this project, as well as Fitchburg State University, New View Communities, which is a housing organization based here in the city, but works all throughout, you know, central Massachusetts, the city of Fitchburg, and a number of community volunteers. For a project timeline, this first year, 2024, which is just about to wrap up, is going to involve quite a bit of planning and has involved community outreach. We had a big public canvassing campaign in the three target neighborhoods that we're hoping to do these projects in. And we held a series of public meetings at the end of last month, as well as a couple smaller meetings like this one tonight. Year two in 2025 will involve hiring out some design firms and doing some of the engineering, getting the permitting all set, and then hopefully by the end of the year, getting started on breaking ground and installation. And then come year three, we're going to be doing a maintenance and monitoring program where we'll have some volunteers and some of our own staff kind of going out to the sites, seeing what works in terms of plant survival, things like that, and then making necessary adjustments. All right. So a quick overview on nature-based solutions. If anyone has any questions while we're going through this whole process, feel free to raise your hand too and ask for any clarifications. So a quick note on the difference between gray infrastructure and green infrastructure. Gray infrastructure is what you traditionally think of when you think, you know, say, water handling infrastructure. These can be anything man-made, like, you know, your bridges, your pipes, ditches, traditional swales and retention ponds, seawalls, dams, things like that. Green infrastructure is essentially complementing this existing gray infrastructure through harnessing the power of nature and soils and biological processes to help, you know, augment their power and better deal with stormwater. And other projects that we're proposing tonight are going to be, you know, replacing any of the existing gray infrastructure and are kind of being built alongside the city's combined, you know, sewer overflow project to help enhance existing gray infrastructure. So we'll get a little bit into the types of nature-based solutions that we're going to be looking at for the various project sites. There are a ton of different sorts of nature-based solutions that include, you know, a number of types of projects, but the ones that we're focusing on tonight are pocket forests, rain gardens, bioswales, pollinator gardens, and porous pavers. And so we'll go a little bit into more detail on those. Pocket forests, as the name suggests, are just small forests, and in the cities, they're often planted in parks, medians, and vacant lots. These can have a number of benefits. They produce shade, which can sort of be cast onto sidewalks and nearby parking lots. They offer urban habitat to your birds, your pollinating insects, squirrels, things like that. They also help reduce noise and filter air. Rain gardens are just a type of garden that's designed specifically to catch stormwater runoff from rain events and sort of funnel it into the soil where it can percolate down before rushing into the rivers or sewer system and overflowing them, leading to flooding. Typically, water is diverted from impervious surfaces like rooftops and roads and parking lots. And a well-designed rain garden will always drain before, you know, the amount of time where sitting water becomes dangerous, you know, say, a place where mosquitoes can breed and things like that. And one specific type of rain garden that we're covering today is the linear rain garden or bioswale. This sort of straight shape on them makes them easy to place alongside roads, streets, and medians, as well as parking lots. Usually curb cuts, as you can kind of see on this image, are cut into the road to allow water to flow into them. The excess water sort of drains into the soil, and any water that, you know, once the soil is saturated, that can escape, will then be directed into, you know, perforated pipes underground or raised manholes, sort of just above the soil level within the bioswale. These are particularly good at reducing combined sewer overflow, and some bioswales already exist here within the city of Fitchburg, having been built in the last year or two along Chestnut Street and Oliver Street.
That water that should divert into plants?
Yeah.
And perforated pipes? Do you divert that into a stream or back into the water source, I mean, the same sources?
So essentially, the way that these are set up is that they can handle quite a bit of water flowing into them. And any of the water that, you know, gets, you know, ideally, that sort of, once there's a level of saturation that's still remaining within the swale, will either go up into, again, like a manhole or underground into a pipe that's got holes in it, that would be then going into the sewer, you know, the city's undergoing a project right now to separate out their waste sewers from their stormwater sewers, and we would divert this into the stormwater sewers. But a well-working swale will be able to catch a lot of that water that would all be going into the sewers normally. Pollinator gardens are another type of nature-based solution. None of the projects that we're proposing tonight are merely pollinator gardens, but oftentimes, they sort of have that aspect to them where you can plant flowers that help out pollinators alongside other natural features like swales and trees. Permeable pavers or porous pavers are sort of, you know, as opposed to traditional asphalt, which doesn't allow a lot of water to percolate down to the soil. These sort of allow gaps between where clove or grass or mosses can grow and water can percolate down into that soil. There are many different types of permeable pavement, but we're mostly focusing, for the projects that we're proposing tonight, on things like this, that are tiles with gaps in between them, that are usually strong enough for cars to drive on them, you know, with the exception of, you know, larger vehicles. So certain areas can handle them, certain, you know, roads probably can't. And then there are, there's no reason why, you know, a single type of nature-based solution site can't incorporate multiple sorts of nature-based solution projects. So pollinator gardens can be bioswales, pollinator gardens could also be pocket forests, and pocket forests could be something like riparian restoration, where you restore the side of a stream bank. All right. So now we're going to launch into the various proposal sites that we're thinking about for this project. If anybody has any strong thoughts about why you like or dislike any of these projects or why you think they work or wouldn't work, you know, we're very open to comments, and we're looking for as much public feedback as possible. So the three neighborhoods that we're focusing on, because there's a lot of work being done already in the downtown area, are Clegg Horn, the Patch, and the University Neighborhood. So again, we explored a lot of different types of projects and a lot of different potential project sites, and these are the ones that we thought most sort of aligned with the purpose of this grant. Again, this is an EPA environmental justice grant. It's supposed to be focused on what are called environmental justice communities as identified by the state as just areas with low income that have traditionally not been as served by, you know, infrastructure. And so again, let us know which projects you guys like the best. All right. So we're starting off with the Clegg Horn neighborhood, which, as you can see, defined here, is kind of bound by Franklin Street in the south, and then River Street along the north, and a series of other streets on the east and west. Our first project proposal is a bioswale at the River Street median. This is in the northern part of Clegg Horn. So as you can see in that top picture there, there's kind of, in the middle of that blue zone, there's a long line, strip of grass between two sides of River Street. It's about 250 feet long, and it's a city-owned parcel between the two streets, or parts of the street. And it's right in the middle of all that blue right there, which represents a 100-year floodplain along the North Nashville River. It's, there's an area just to the north of it that goes, you know, sort of dip, where the road dips below a train track, that floods routinely, and this area sort of trends downhill along River Street to that flood area. And so we are proposing for this potential project site, a flood-catching bioswale in the middle of that median. That would basically involve regrading the soil there, installing curb cuts to catch water running downhill along that street, and then planting native plants within the middle that would act to help absorb the water as it flows through. This could also double as a pollinator garden and potential row of street trees on the other side as well. And here's a little visualization of what that may look like if we end up going through this project. Does anyone have any thoughts or comments on this?
You understand where that is, that overpass there where it always floods, where that light is, that traffic light is?
Yeah.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Yeah. So that would, up ahead would mitigate that water, hopefully.
Yes, yeah. And as you guys, oh, sorry. And as you can see from this picture, you know, on the left, that's the current site as it is now, and on the right, that is a different site that we think is roughly analogous in terms of size, where, again, you can see curve cuts and paved areas that sort of lead downhill. There's a series of rocks to sort of break the water and it's, you know, reduce the speed flowing into the swale. And then you can see there's that sort of flat bottom of the concurved bioswale where, you know, you can plant sedges and sort of road salt-tolerant native flowers, things like that, and then water will percolate down. And just to demonstrate too, you can see in that right image, there's also a grate that's a little bit above hill, right above the swale there. It's a round storm grate that would, could also be installed onsite so that water doesn't end up backing, back into the road. Any questions or comments on this one?
Is the grate covered as a plan, Roger?
Yes. So the grant, just to do a little bit more into detail on this, the grant is not based on local taxes. It's a federal program from the EPA. NRWA is the awardee, and the city of Fitchburg, as well as New View Communities and Fitchburg State University are sub-awardees that are each receiving funding through this grant to help with different aspects of the project. All right. So this is the second of the two Clegg Horn proposals spots. This is the Fairmont Street intersection. There's a series of parks that you can see in that top image there, also in Clegg Horn, just south of the sort of first project site. Right now, they have some greenery in them, but we think that they could use a little bit more, especially focused on that flood prevention and mitigation aspect. So this was identified through the city's Municipal Vulnerability and Preparedness Program as a great site for nature-based solutions. As you can see, that's the intersection of Fairmont Street, which sort of splits on the south and left/westward side, and Daniel Street, which runs downhill from the bottom of the image up on the east. There's three small parks there already, and a lot of water flows downhill through this area, sort of rushing towards the North Nashville River. This project would be sort of multifaceted. It would involve planting some shade trees, creating, putting in a water-catching bioswale along the left side of the sort of central, largest park there, and then also potentially putting in a pollinator hedgerow as well.
The changes that are --
Yeah.
These changes, you're going to make in Daniel Street and in knowing that area or anything else, will that contain all of the water? Or some of that's still going to run off and go into the river, whatever?
So the whole, you know, the project isn't of a scale where you can catch every drop of water falling down, you know, going downhill. Mostly, it's to, like I was saying, supplement the existing other projects within the city to try to do as much as we can to mitigate the damage from very large storm events.
And we had a storm event in July where Daniel Street was ripped up. Yeah, that was a --
They didn't help a lot. Tried to put that amount of water.
Yeah, that amount. I mean, we got one inch of rain in 10 minutes.
Yes, yeah, that was a big one.
Yeah, the Leamster fiasco.
Yeah. The Leamster one was two months later.
Yeah, and the Leamster one of September of last year too was just massive and kind of the catalyst for a lot of this, this change throughout the city. So as you can see here, there's a map on the left, which identifies some of the potential project sites in a little more detail. As you can see in that pink section over there, that's the 500-year floodplain. And then a little bit further up, you can see the blue, that's the 100-year floodplain. There's a couple of pictures. You can see the Adrian Ford Center there at the corner. You know, when we did the community meetings a few months back at Fitchburg State University and the New View Community Offices, which were open to the public, we had a lot of comments about this being kind of the, the heart of the Clegg Horn neighborhood. And so we think it would be a pretty nice project site. One aspect of this as well would be, again, that bioswale along, I believe that's Fairmont Place. So as you can see, there's the, there's the current sort of denuded area on that one side of the park, not a lot of bushes or trees or anything like that. We would propose potentially putting in some curb cuts there and a bioswale along that road to catch.
You're basically using the water to where you want it to go.
Yes, yeah. Catching a portion of it from, you know, going downhill, overflowing the river, all that. Another aspect of this project site is this one particular park. This is Emil J. Gojen, or Goguen? No, actually.
Gogan.
Gogan, yeah. Gogan Park, which is, you know, as you can see, is sort of bound there by that one wall in the back and then Daniel Street in the foreground. It's a little greener nowadays than when this picture was taken, but not by too much. We were thinking that, you know, it used to be mulch, now some grass is growing. We were thinking we could transform this park into a potential pocket forest. There were some comments at previous meetings that that could represent maybe an issue for line of sight, and so a potential other solution for this area could be a pollinator garden where we plant a lot of the green areas in between with native flowers that the bees and butterflies like to go after. And we were also, as a final aspect of this, considering talking to the DPW about the potential of putting in wall-crawling vines that don't, you know, damage the mortar but would just sort of sit along the outside of that, that back wall there and increase the green space. All right. Does anyone have any comments or questions about this second project proposal? Okay. Number three, and the final one for Clegg Horn that we're considering, is a revamp of Park Hill Park, particularly a section of Sand Brook, which runs to the middle. So there's this channelized stream, which I said is Sand Brook, that runs right down the middle of Park Hill Park. We think that this grant represents a potential opportunity to remove some of the stones along the edge, regrade the banks, and widen the bottom of the stream, and maybe introduce meander to it to sort of renaturalize it, and then install riparian plants, including some shade trees along the banks, so that people, one, the channel doesn't represent as much of a hazard for the kids that play around that area, and two, we increase the green space and restore some of the natural benefits of having a more natural bank along that part of the stream. We could also put in a little public nature walk in the area, or an interpretive sign, a bench, things like that. And we think that this would help prevent flooding downhill. So just as a little diagram here, you can see there's a, what a natural sort of riparian area kind of looks like in that bottom image. And then right now, we've got what the area looks like right on the bottom right, kind of a little denuded, some of the more grass has come in, but it's not being used too much right now, the park. And then you can see a map of the park right there. And that one line that you see between the two baseball field areas is a walkway, and right to the left of it is where the channelized stream goes. All right. So our current site, again, this image was taken in the summer, the one on the left. The area had no grass on it. Now, some of that grass has returned. The potential project would involve, again, removing some of the stones, especially on that left or westward bank of the river, and then sort of restoring the bank, as you can see there, using erosion mats to prevent, you know, during the construction process, a lot of the soil from, you know, going away when it rains. And then the goal would be to introduce sedges, grasses, some trees, and some brush along the edge, natural riparian plants. Does anyone have any questions about this potential project? All right. So the next, we have a couple of potential projects in the Patch neighborhood. So as you can see, the Patch here is, you know, the definition is sometimes contested, but it's basically between a bend in the North Nashville River and then either Water Street or a few streets to the west of Water Street.
It's going to be near the rail trail that's coming?
Yes, near the rail trail that's kind of, actually ends right about, you can see a little blue line going to the side of the tracks over there that ends around Railroad Street and Middle Street. That's where the, I think, the current furthest branch of that railroad, or rail trail ends.
They're all interacting with what they're doing now. They're trying to finish up from the Fifth Street Bridge down to behind St. Bernard's Church.
Yeah.
And that's where you're talking about?
Yes, that area.
Is now, is that a separate project from what you're doing, what you're rolling?
Yeah, so these are separate projects, hopefully working in tandem. If we get a lot of feedback about flooding along the potential route, then that would be a wonderful opportunity to put in some flood infrastructure. All right. So the first of the two Patch projects that we're proposing is the Seven Third Street Lot, which would be a rain garden/pocket forest. So there's a vacant and municipally-owned lot at the corner of Third Street and Water Street, right on the border of the Patch, as you can see in that little map. Water Street is the one that runs sort of diagonal to the left, and Third Street is the one that runs upward diagonal to the right. It's less than an acre, about 0.9 acres in size, and it's an open area where we think a rain garden would be very useful. It's currently filled, or until very recently, was filled with invasives and some unused pavement. And during large precipitation events, water flows down Spruce Street, which is the running diagonal and down in the bottom-left corner, but water flows down that street, downhill, over Water Street, and into Third, and then rushes towards the North Nashville River, where it can sometimes cause flooding at the bottom of the Patch, towards the railroad tracks. The land here, we think, looked like this in 2011, where it was relatively clear. In 2019, you started to see some plants, mostly invasives, take over. And by 2024, this picture was taken in the summer, it was completely overgrown. Thankfully, they've gone through recently and gotten rid of a lot of the trash that was on site. There was like a ski-doo and some, you know, bricks and things like that on there. Those are now gone, thankfully, and as are most of the plants, and it's kind of returned to that 2011 state, with the exception of a large ash tree, which has since died and is still on the property and would have to be removed. So the plan here would be to, you know, after the plot has now been cleared of trash and debris and all those invasive plants, to regrade the land and get rid of that dead ash tree, and then we could replant the area with native plants, including flowers and shade trees. Curb cuts would then be put into Water Street to catch all the water flowing downhill off of Spruce and divert it, some of it into that plot to then sink into the ground as opposed to rushing downhill. Does anyone have any questions about this potential project?
The only question I have is, it's all is great, but who's going to take care of that after you tell it?
That was one of the --
It's the issue.
Yes, yeah. So the question was, who's going to take care of these after they're installed? So for the first year, as we alluded to earlier, the NRWA and a series of volunteers that are being, a network that's being built by New View Communities as part of this grant program, are going to be doing a lot of the monitoring, the weeding, the trash cleanup, stuff like that. After that, we're hoping that that volunteer organization will continue on and that we can keep, you know, donating our time to doing the upkeep and stuff. We are going to be passing the baton to the Department of Public Works, who is quite stretched thin at the moment. So we're hoping that with each of the design of these, that after a few years of maintenance, they'll mostly be self-regulating. There are certain ways to build pocket forests, such as the Milwaukee Forest, that after the first two or three years of upkeep, they become almost self-regulating systems. And while there'll never be no self-regula, sorry, no like 100% self-regulation with something like a bioswale, we're hoping to focus the design on being as minimally impactful on the city's budget as possible.
One of the questions I had was about the trees that, because we've got trees all over the city that have impacted our sidewalks. So Ryan talked about, well, we're going to, we're going to look at trees where the roots go straight down rather than spread out.
I think you can say, the type of trees and grass you put in make a big difference.
Yeah.
You can get all slow-grown grass, or like you say, a tree that roots go straight down instead of spread out.
Yeah.
Is that all part of that?
Yeah, those are the trees he's looking at, that Ryan is looking at.
All considerations, yeah. It's tough because the bigger, the more shade a tree, you know, sort of is able to throw, usually the bigger tree it is. And so if you have those sort of near-surface roots, like a lot of street trees do, you know, they are more likely to mess with the soil. And obviously, you know, smaller trees too represent an issue for ADA compliance, allowing people to sort of pass under them easily. So we do want to focus on large street trees, but we want to do as much as possible to try to pick the types of species and varieties where the roots are downward as opposed to more lateral.
How big for a little tree?
Well, we're hoping --
Is it high as a building, or are you going to get miniature trees that even when they mature, that they're still considered small?
We're trying to go at least as large to, again, maintain that, you know, access and ADA compliance so that they're not, none of the lowest branches are anyone's way. But, you know, hopefully, and again, large enough that they can spread as much shade as possible, but again, the variety that doesn't, or won't be as apt to mess with any of the sidewalk infrastructure or roads. And I get into the tree species and the, one of the, you know, the slides coming up as well.
Yeah, about removing all these trees that are in sidewalks that buckle up the sidewalk and take up spot, you know, a sidewalk's supposed to be a sidewalk, not a place to put a tree. All over the city is, there's plenty of main roads, residential roads, there's all kinds of sidewalks that are buckled up, like, you know, buckled up because of the tree roots and like that. And there's some that, if you had a wheelchair, you couldn't get, you couldn't get by it.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, there's some real bad ones.
Yeah, the tree removal is kind of, except for dead or dying trees, is a little bit beyond the scope of this project, just as defined by the EPA. But I will say also, there are, while sometimes trees and tree roots can represent, you know, a threat to the city's walking infrastructure, streets and lawns, they, you know, there's also a lot of co-benefits to urban trees and urban green space too. I mean, like the shade, the noise reduction, the, you know, there's a lot of studies that say that people slowed, you know, in an area that's the exact same speed limit, exact same length of road, people slow down when there's trees, things like that. So there are, there are other safety benefits too.
Well, how about, you're talking about above ground all the time.
Yeah.
How about below ground? There are gas lines, natural gas lines that are underground, and they have, and there's also, you know, storm drains that the roots could break right into the storm drain, or, you know, I mean, you've got to think below ground, not just above ground, how it looks and like that.
Yes, yeah. So we're --
The way it should get rid of these.
When it comes to, you know, excavation, you know, that'll happen in concert with this project, and any plantings that go on, any of the regrading, we're always contacting Dig Safe first and making sure that we're well far away from any underground infrastructure, including electric infrastructure, gas lines, sewer lines, stuff like that. Where, you know, it's, we certainly wouldn't want to, again, have any of these projects be an impediment to the city's infrastructure. We're focused on strengthening them and sort of doing our due diligence to make sure we're not at risk of hitting anything like that.
There's also, in the spring, we usually have a water cleanup all over the city. I haven't seen too many, I haven't met any people from, you know, the Fitchburg State University. You talk about you have partners of Fitchburg State University in the Wash and Association. Where are those people in the spring when we're trying to clean up the, clean up the city? I mean, you talk about putting all this stuff in, and you say, you've got to have volunteers, you can't even have, we don't even have volunteers just to clean up the trash, never mind cut grass, trim bushes, trim trees, or whatever like that. So I mean, you know, why don't you get a little more intense in getting some of these people who love the river? This place is all over the city lately.
Yeah. That's where it was.
Ridge Road, North Street, the John Fitch Highway, along Nichols Road, John Fitch Highway from Ridge Road to the nursing home in the Coolidge Heart.
Ryan will be talking about those areas.
We actually are, yeah. We've got a couple of those coming up on the, on the agenda. I will say that, you know, helping out with trash pickup days and stuff, that is something that the NRWA does get in on quite a bit. I don't know, you know, I'm relatively new to the organization, so I don't know when it's Earth Day season, come the spring, we do sort of, we are spread thin throughout the 32 communities in northern Massachusetts and southern New Hampshire, where we're trying to get our limited staff, you know, in as many communities as possible. But I know that we do also quite a bit of work in Fitchburg too, invasive removals, you know, along Riverfront Park, Riverfront Park in general, I think, was done in concert with the NRWA. So we try to do as much as we can in terms of environmental impact for the city, including this project, including the MVP program, and we're hoping to, you know, do even more. this project, including the MVP program, and we're hoping to, you know, do even more in the future, including those trash pickup days and the volunteer networks, things like that.
Yeah, all I hear about, when you talk about the watershed association, you talk about rotten in the areas down there, we even talk about the tributaries, protecting the tributaries, cleaning up the tributaries that flow into the Nashua River and the Nashua River in Pittsburgh.
Yes, yeah.
You know, I mean, you know, talk about, talk to those people to get their members,
Yes, yeah.
to come up here. Same thing with Pittsburgh State University, you know, the faculty, the staff, the students, you know, get them to come out on, you know, water cleanup days, I mean, it's, you know, or even maintain their areas that have the streets that order, you know, because Pittsburgh State even just about owns Coolidge Park now.
Yeah.
They have Civic Center, Landry Arena, the Park Lot, and like that. How about them on a regular basis to keep the places clean?
Yeah, I couldn't agree more that these organizations should be more involved in the city, and I think that that's, you know, a big part of what this project's all about. But anyway, we'll move on to the next project site. So the next one, and the second of two in the patch neighborhood is Bartley Nolan Park, and we're proposing a rain garden and pocket forest for this park, if we end up going forward with this project. So this is a two-acre park near the corner of Beekman and Cliff Street, as you can see in that little image right in the top right. So while the southern border of the park does have a number of large canopy trees right now, casting a lot of shade on a little playground over there, there's historically been not a lot of other trees elsewhere in the park. The city's made some progress on this through Greening the Gateway Cities Grant, which is wonderful, but a lot of those trees are still fairly mature, going to take some time to grow up, and we still think that there's more that could be done in the area. So the NRWA believes that installing a little pocket forest, particularly in that bottom right corner, in the, in the background there, along Cliff Street, could do a long, a lot towards sort of mitigating urban heat within the park and on the adjacent street. We would also be installing a rain garden, if we went through with this project site, in the lower section of the park, sort of towards the east, and that would catch some of the rain that tends to pool there and cause saturation in the soil and some standing water. Oh, this is, so it's in the patch?
Patch.
Yep, so it's, if you look at, let me see, this right here, it's around St. Anthony's Church, this is the, hold on a sec. Yep. So directly to the...
It used to be an elementary school there one time.
Yes, which was apartments.
Then it became apartments.
Yep, but the apartments are no longer, I think they've got a fence around it at the moment, but, but there's a lovely park right next to it.
Coolidge Park.
Yeah. All right. So, does anyone have any questions about this potential project site before we move on to the final neighborhood?
What happened? The park that's staying now, they have a, they have a basketball court there and everything else.
Yep.
Is that going to go away?
Nope, so the existing park will remain as is, including all of the, you know, the amenities there, the court, the playground, that, you know, all of that that's sort of clustered along that one street there, but the remaining area, which you can kind of see, doesn't have a lot of trees there now, and a lot of green space, that would be in the larger and lower one, subject to the addition of a little pocket forest and a potential, you know, ADA compliant bench, and in the sort of upper, smaller of the two, that's where we install a rain garden. All right, so now we'll move on to the university neighborhood. So there's a couple different project proposals around the Longstow Middle School, former Pittsburgh High School. These include rain garden, street trees. So as you can see in that one map, there's at 98 Academy Street, you've got that large building, that's the middle school right there. A number of project sites have kind of been proposed over here, so you'll see 6.1, 6.2, 6.3, and any one of these projects could be achieved either alone or in concert with the others, depending on community feedback and the preference of the school itself. All right, so we've got the Academy Street Rain Garden as our number one for this area. This is a municipally owned lot, again, relatively small in terms of acreage. While it's not directly abutting the school, this lot could be revitalized as a little rain garden. The school actually is going to be turning this space into either a community garden or a outdoor sort of teaching space, and we were thinking of potentially partnering with them to add a section of it that is a rain-catching garden, that catches water flowing downhill off of Taft Street, Mount Globe Street and Pleasant Street, and then onto Spring Street, which you can kind of see in both images there. So a lot of water, sorry, the lot would be regraded and replanted with native plants after we put in a little, you know, culvert to catch the water coming off of that street, and then shade trees and interpretive signage would be put in as well. Students would potentially get an opportunity to participate in this one during like a fun outdoor planting day, where we get to teach them about, you know, nature, invasive species, you know, the benefits of native species and nature-based solutions, and we had a day similar to this out in, yeah.
Something just came to my head, it's with Taft Street and Academy Street. Whatever you're going to do, how, how do you slow the water down? Some of these streets are pretty steep, and when the water's coming down, it's great that you have something at the end where the water's going to go, but something at the back of that?
Yes.
Slows the water down.
Yep, so with a lot of these, and I don't have a visualization here for that specifically, but as you can see, there's a, there's a storm drain sort of image, that would be, you know, added along Spring Street, and the water would go into a little underground catch basin, shoot out into the rain garden, but to prevent as much erosion as possible, we would put some rocks and breakage to, in order to stop the flow of that water as it was entering the garden.
So I guess the understanding is, although this is supposed to be green infrastructure, I mean, we're talking about curb cuts, we're talking about culverts, we're talking, so there is going to be some gray infrastructure?
Exactly.
To complement the green infrastructure.
I was going to say, because water has a force.
Yeah.
And watching this is great, but I couldn't believe that, you know, there wasn't some way to break the water speed, because that will take it out in quick order, so.
Yes, yeah, all these things are designed, so...
The shade tree up there.
Yes, yeah, all the, all the streets up there, that cobblestone street is amazing how steep it is, and it runs right into this project area. So again, a lot of water flows right downhill, there's not a lot in terms of water-catching infrastructure, sewer infrastructure there as is, and we're hoping that this can at least contribute to the, you know, slowing of water going into, you know, rushing downstream towards downtown and the flood zone that we're in now. All right, and so, yeah, again, this, this project would involve in moving the, sorry, removing the invasives that are already on site, sort of getting rid of a little bit of the trash and debris, regrading the area, and then planting some native plants.
So is this project standard, or is it...
Oh, it's standard. So we're in the final decision phase for which one of these proj, which three of these projects rather, are going to be selected. We're sort of wrapping up the community feedback phase, we're looking at which ones are feasible in concert with each other within the budget of the grant, and then we're probably going to decide within, you know, the next couple of weeks and put the finalists up to bid. All right, and again, just to reiterate, we'll be regrading the soil, replanting some native plants, and adding some interpretive signage for the kids to go out and check out what the rain garden's all about.
Will you, will you try to get one project in each area?
Yes.
Is that, is that the goal?
Yeah, so each...
One in each, each area, you've got Cleggmont, you've got...
The patch and university.
Patch, and then you've got the John Fitch area, right?
Yes, or the university area.
University.
Is there a timeline on this, can you explain please?
So the, the end of the project period is going to be spring of 2027. We're hoping that, you know, again, the design work for these is going to start very late in 2024 into 2025, and then we're hoping to do all the permitting in 2025 as well and get these out there come late '25, early '26, and then that next year will be all about making the tweaks necessary to make sure that these are lasting projects. All right.
Can we get the best planning for the park?
Yes, exactly. So again, 6.2, the next Longstow sort of area project is a little tree planting along Pleasant and Davis Street. So as you can see on that map there, to the left of the school, there's a street that has that little strip of grass that you can see in the bottom image. We were thinking that we could plant some impact-tolerant trees in that area, like the American Sycamore or Hackberry Tree, to act as shade trees and sort of go, you know, whose canopies, once they mature, will eventually sort of spill over into that employee parking lot on the right, and then the, the street parking on the left, and also, you know, positively impact kids walking along the street.
Not impact the sidewalk.
And not impact the sidewalks. Yeah, this one will involve a lot of engineering consulting to make sure that we're not impacting the sidewalks, and also not impacting the retaining walls on the side of that parking lot there that you can see. Again, this is a roughly .03 acre sort of bit of land that runs along the sidewalk. It's a stretch of grass right now that's mostly, you know, just, just grass, and so we think we can fit about 13 to 15 eventually large shade trees into this area, and a similar part of this project would be another smaller bit of grass that runs along the street to the north of the school. That one's only about 0.01 acres, but we could fit about six or seven large shade trees there as well. Any questions about this project? All right. 6.3 is a Pritchard Street revival of, either revival of the garden or more likely pocket forest. So as you can see, you know, if you guys know this area, there's a, some stairs that come right out from the sort of center of the school going downward or south, that's a, you know, a big public stairway. To the left of that, there's a, there's a sort of little wooded area that used to be, up until relatively recently, a little community garden. The community garden didn't end up working out because of mostly water issues that had to do with drainage and getting water out there from hoses, and so, you know, some have called for a revival of the garden. A lot of the community feedback is that, from people who were involved in the garden in the past, is that that might not be feasible. So an alternate sort of potential sub-project of the Longstow School project would be to fill in the garden area with native trees in order to expand a little pocket forest there, and then maintain a space in the middle with benches where people can go, enjoy the, the green space, you know, and access that from the, the south. Does anyone have any questions about this potential project? All right, and then the final Longstow School project is this courtyard depaving or porous paver replacement project. So directly to the east of the school, the left on this image, there's a sort of large courtyard that's relatively underutilized at the moment, that is currently completely paved. It's just under 9,000 square feet or 0.2 acres, and we think that this could be a wonderful place for some depaving and replacement with porous pavers. We would keep the sort of basketball courts that you might be able to see in the very back there, we'd keep all the pavement around that, and we would keep a section of pavement hugging the building itself to maintain access for emergency vehicles and also, you know, people with mobility impairment, and then a large section of that courtyard, we'd rip out the pavement and replace them with those permeable pavers we talked about a little bit earlier. This way represents an interesting opportunity for volunteers to get involved, there's a lot of depaving going on through groups in Somerville and elsewhere in Massachusetts, and this is sort of a visualization of what it would look like. The current area is asphalt, you know, relatively broken up, and then the potential would be something like this, where cars could still get onto it and drive around without damaging the soil underneath, but then that soil would still be, you know, able to catch some of the, the rain coming downhill off that area. Any questions about this project?
How about the grant you're talking about?
Yeah.
How much is it?
So the grant...
How much does it spend us?
The grant in total is $500,000 over the course of three years and change. So it's, or it's actually exactly three years, so it started in, on April 1st of this year and runs until April 1st of 2027.
That $500,000, the school's due to take care of all these projects?
Three, three out of, three projects. So we're doing, we're doing three out of the 10 that are being presented here today, and...
One in each area.
One in each area, yeah, the patch, Clegghorn in the neighborhood. So of the ones that we are covering today, I think we have one more after this, it's 10 because six is broken up into four. We're going to sort of do a little quick review at the end, and then if you guys want to weigh in on which ones you liked and which ones you didn't, that could contribute to our sort of final decision-making process in the coming weeks about which ones we're going to end up fully realizing. Any questions about this permeable paver project? All right, and our final one has to do with Coolidge Park, and this would involve rain garden and shade trees. So Coolidge Park, as you guys probably know, is a large park right on the border of the university neighborhood. It runs, it's sort of bordered on one side by Fallujah Brook slash Baker Brook, and to the opposite side in the west by John Fitch Highway. It's about 63.8 acres in total, which is pretty huge, and is the most used public park. Now, most of that acreage is forest, sort of to the north and off of this image, but the southern portion is, again, very, very popular with people in the city. The Wallace Civic Center is just in the north of it, right north of that large parking lot that you guys can see, and the area is relatively flood-prone because it borders, again, that Baker Brook slash Fallula Brook, and there's been some recent tree plantings by the city, and they also received their own grant recently to help with the flood infrastructure and resiliency of the park. Our project here would be to work closely with the city to complement their, their flood infrastructure. So we will take a quick look at that park. As you can see, there's the, in blue, 100-year flood plain, and in pink, the 500-year flood plain, that sort of spills out into the park. The blue areas are of particular concern, I know that there's a lot of standing water that will sort of flood parts of the dog park that you can see in that little bulge on the left, sort of in, in from number three. So that's where we would probably try to put in rain garden or bioswale between the dog park and the sort of retaining wall that you guys can kind of, I don't know if you're familiar with the park, but see when you go, when you visit next. And we would also help out with the tree planting efforts going on in the park, there's a lot of, unfortunately, large shade trees in the south of this, the park that are currently maybe a lost cause because of the Emerald Ash Bore, it's all ash trees that are potentially going to be dying or coming down in the next couple of years, and so we would want to help out, increase the shade in the park over the long term by planting replacement trees that aren't subject to any ongoing invasive infestations. So that's, that would be the Coolidge Street one, again, for, for this neighborhood in particular, we would either do some combination of the Longstow projects, all or a couple of them, or the Coolidge Park project. So if anyone has any preferences there, do let us know. All right, and this is a quick recap, these are the projects that we went over today, the three in Clegghorn, where they bioswaled the River Street median, the Fairmount Street intersection with all those little parks, the Park Hill Park, San Brook Repairian Repair, where we take out some of that channelized stream and replace it with a, with a new bank and some new plants, the Seven Third Street Lot, which was that little lot that had been kind of overgrown until recently, that could turn into a rain garden, Bartley Nolan Park, which would be a rain garden or, and/or pocket forest, and then a number of projects along the Longstow Middle School, and finally, some rain gardens and shade trees in Coolidge Park. So if anybody has any input on these sort of three big projects, we want to pick at least one of them, if there's any that you liked or thought might not work, you know, feel free to speak up, and if you need any reminder as to which ones these specifically are, please also ask.
I need to touch on John Fitch Highway, especially with the tears out.
Yes, so there's a...
Floods all the time, how come that wasn't included in this project?
So there's a separate project funded through a different sort of source that is focusing right now on flooding along the John Fitch Highway, and a lot of these same solutions...
There are a lot of heavy drainers, and I think going in...
Yes.
...the parking lot, where tiny trees were, one of them is dug up, they're putting in all kinds of...
So, yeah, the city's doing a ton of work on John Fitch Highway to try to mitigate those flooding issues, also a ton of work in the downtown area, especially as you go further towards John Fitch Highway and that one bend in the North Nashua that really floods all the time. I believe it's, is it a market basket, or the, what's the, I forget what it is, but...
Yeah, the market basket.
The market basket, yeah.
They're just going to throw something out there, probably doesn't even fit here, but they're going to take the dam down in the Taggarts.
Yeah.
How is that, and if you take the dam down, is that going to have any impact below the dam? Because that, that's a lot of water that comes down out of Ashbury and all through that.
Yep, so the Taggarts Dam is, it's relatively old, it's, it's not a part of this project, and it's kind of outside the project area even, it's, it's not in one of the three neighborhoods, but my understanding is that it's a relatively high-risk dam, and so as storms kind of get worse in the area, and as you get these more, more and more of these like high precipitation events, slow-moving storms with a lot of water per minute.
The dam is a bad tree, has to come down. I'm just saying, how are they looking at slowing that amount of water coming down? Because that's, it's going downhill from there to the river, so, I, I, it probably has nothing to do with what you're talking about, I'm just being nosy.
I don't know off the top of my head all the efforts that come with the McTaggart's Dam removal. I know that all dam removal projects involve like a restoration sort of section in what used to be the, the area behind the dam that was flooded for a bit. They've lowered the water level significantly in Taggart, so it used to be a standing pond, but if you go there, nowadays you'll see sort of a wetland meadow where there's all these, you know, wildflowers and things, so it's already pretty close to the level of flow that you would see when you remove... So it's already pretty close to the level of flow that you would see when you remove the dam. You know, mostly I think it's.
No impact?
I don't know if it would be no impact, but it would be less impact than, than you would think with getting rid of a whole basically artificial pond because they've already lowered that water level. Yeah.
Thank you. Can I be no shout out?
I mean, and Clegg Horn aside, we don't, of course, we don't have the ward councilor here for, for Ward too, but those, those, those two projects with Fairmont Street and, and River Street, those are two, this, there's been water problems there for, they really, either one of them would be great projects.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's good input. So any other comment on these three? Again, that's that Fairmont Street intersection area, the Park Hill Park, and then the Long Stowe depaving and, you know, pervious, impervious pavers.
Well, on, the Indian Street, that below St. Joe's Church, there's, there's storm drain things that are completely covered with, you know, trash and leaves and stuff like that. That's why the water runs so much downhill. They're not kept clean.
Yeah.
And all these extra trees and like that. In the fall, all these leaves are gonna come down and gonna block up all the, all the storm drains. So it's not, all these projects are great fantasy land, but they're just not gonna work because no one's gonna be taking, they can't keep the area clean of, you know, the Fairmont Street intersection with Emerald Oak and Park is and like that, Park Hill Park, you know, and like that. You know, there's so much trash, you can't even, you know, I, I try to clean them on a regular basis, but, you know, and now you're gonna have trees, the leaves are gonna fall. No one's gonna clean them up. They're gonna be all over the place. You know, you should, you should concentrate on getting rid of the trees that are buckling up the sidewalks and blocking part of the sidewalks, you know, sidewalks of pedestrians who, you know, who are not.
Yeah.
I mean, stupid trees that are buckling up all these sidewalks, they're all over the city like that. So it's, it, drop the stupid stuff, you know, like that. You can, you know, what's wrong with just grass and shrubs and shrubs, not these trees that are never gonna, you know, never gonna get trimmed, never gonna get, you know, taken care of because no one.
But that's, but that's a negative viewpoint, Gary. We're, we're trying to say, say positive, positive with these, with this project. Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it depends, it depends on which projects are, are chosen too. I mean, is, you know.
Yeah, some projects are more heavy on trees than others. And I think, you know, that's, that's, I mean, a lot of input about, you know, focus on the projects that have less trees near roads and, you know, pathways and parks and sidewalks and stuff. That's something that we should consider when, you know, making a final decision about, about what the long-term impact of these projects are gonna be. And, you know, I think trees in, you know, along, say, Coolidge Park where they're not gonna be rushing into the sewer system or in Park Hill Park might be a better alternative than trees right next to a sidewalk in, say.
Near Long Stowe.
Yeah, near Long Stowe, yeah.
Well, the trees, the trees are right, they're not in, in the sidewalks and like that. You know, you'd have to double the, the amount of employees at the DPW to take care of this stuff.
Yeah.
Because you're not gonna have residents now. I mean, I, I've cleaned up Park Hill Park a lot of just the trash. There's nobody that waters, that lives watering the park, come out and clean the park.
Yeah. I, I will say, and I don't know if they water the park, but I did, when last our, we did a site visit, which was just a couple of weeks ago to do some soil testing at the different sites, we went to Parker Park. We did see a Good Samaritan going around picking up the trash. So I mean, there's, there's a lot of good, good, I don't know if they were, you know, lived right next to the park or not, but they, you know, you do see people helping out, yourself included.
Gary's one of them.
Yeah, yeah.
But it does need. I don't live near the park. I mean, I'm talking about the people who water the park and live on the streets near the park. They don't do anything else. They don't do anything.
Now, does anyone have any preferences, again, with, with any of these three before we move on to the, the final slide? Okay. And then just amongst these other sort of secondary in terms of scale projects, do any of them stick out as, you know, particularly good, particularly desirable, undesirable?
Well, that bioswale at the River Street median would be a, a good project, I think, to help mitigate that water in the area. Because it's been a problem for decades in that area.
I don't consider the Long Stowe Middle School to be in a university neighborhood.
It's, I'd say it's the, the Coolidge Street and Long Stowe are kind of almost the two opposite sides of that, that space. It, it depends on where you draw the line, but we've got feedback either way. All right. Any final closing questions or anything like that? All right. Well, thank you guys very much for attending. I appreciate you listening.
Yeah, thank you, Ryan. All right, we got Doug Bushman from the Pittsburgh Housing Authority Executive Director. He's gonna talk a, a lot about Wallace Towers, but he may have other, other topics. If you have any questions, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer them. Go ahead, Doug.
Councilor Schultz. I'm sorry?
Big thing about Wallace Towers, it's in progress.
It's in progress. Councilor Schultz, thank you for having me. This is a return. I was here in January of this year. It's been a really exciting year for the housing authority and for the city. A quick recap, I've been the executive director of the Pittsburgh Housing Authority since January nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. I know the date very well, which is coming up on my fifth year, I believe. On my presentation board on the side, to be honest with you, two thousand nineteen was a difficult year. I came from the Marlboro Housing Authority. The conditions that we found at the Pittsburgh Housing Authority, I brought a lot of my team with me from Marlboro, were something I hope I, I never see as a public administrator. By August of nineteen, I really did not think that the housing authority would be able to stand on its own. It had been managed for five years by the Lebonster Housing Authority. The conditions were pretty, pretty dire. But in two thousand nineteen, we started building a new team and we started to apply to the state for millions of dollars of capital infusion and also funds for operational costs as well. In two thousand twenty, twenty-three, we had to respond to COVID. We had to make many management refinements. Twenty-one and twenty-three, we really began making vast improvements and then the construction started. We finished the Canton Valley renovation project going on two years now. That was a six million dollar infusion of capital. And I, if you ever have a chance to drive by Canton Valley, it's a beautiful little property. And one thing about the Pittsburgh Housing Authority and our Board of Commissioners, we fight for the amenities that make a property look nice. I love this presentation here. I'm not an expert on swales and, and trees, et cetera, but I know what looks nice. And we all want to live in a neighborhood that looks great. I grew up in affordable housing, which was actually designed to make it very nice. It wasn't just a concrete construction. We want our affordable housing properties to look nice because it's an amenity and it helps local property owners. You don't want to have your prime investment, your home, a budding, a piece of property that doesn't look good. I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna decrease your property values. So we're injecting tens of millions of dollars into our public housing properties in the city of Pittsburgh. And this is a statistic I, I love to cite. We have almost seventy million dollars under warranty, design, bidding and active construction. Those are Boston Housing Authority numbers. Not per capita, but actually a gross amount of money that we're managing because people in Boston and Washington have faith in the Pittsburgh Housing Authority Board of Commissioners and a team that we have. And another side note, over ninety percent of our housing is state public housing. Massachusetts is one of the few states that has its own public housing program. But Boston and the professionals that we have to respond to, they have confidence in the Pittsburgh Housing Authority, that the team that we built, and that includes the Board of Commissioners as well, and they're investing in the team that we have in our plan. So the grant scale, we made vast investments in our properties. We have some scheduled improvements to Green Acres, Daniel Heights and Durkin. But today I want to talk about Wallace Tower. In two thousand nineteen, we applied for a called a mod phase program from the state. Mod phase was to transform senior public housing to make it more livable, aging in place. And we came up with a concept and the state funded us. It was December nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. We had the Lieutenant Governor at the time come to Pittsburgh for the, for the announcement. And for a number of years, we've been designing the Wallace Tower. We've already completed the outside. We actually installed air source heat pumps with a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar grant from Unitel, the biggest that they've ever done. So a lot of the work has been done on, on the outside and the air source heat pumps. But however, now for the last four months, we've been doing the interior. GVW Construction out of Lynn is the construction company. It's an over twenty-two million dollar construction contract. And I have to tell you, signing a contract at twenty-two million dollars, I took a picture of it, it's something that you don't do every day. And GVW, they use union labor, very professional company. Every Monday, we have our construction meetings. We're on schedule. We should be completed in sixteen months. When Wallace Tower is completed, the interior's gonna be almost, it's almost a gut rehab that includes plumbing, ventilation, windows, new roof as well. And four of the floors are all gonna have walk-in showers. We're getting away from the tubs. And the concept for Wallace Towers is aging in place. Live longer, live better. And the cost of, I think of a nursing home now is hundreds, I think it's three hundred thousand dollars per year for one person to go to a nursing home. So we think that over a ten-year period, we can pay back the investment that the taxpayers have made at Wallace Tower. And over ninety percent of our residents live in Pittsburgh. We have a local residence, a preference for residents as well, for veterans as well. But this project is gonna revitalize senior living in Pittsburgh. And out from Generation X, I was born in nineteen sixty-five, and next year, unfortunately, Generation X begins the march into senior citizen status. And we want to have these aging in place communities because we're re-envisioning what it's gonna be like to be a senior citizen. And nobody wants to go to a nursing home. Nobody wants to go to a hospital for a trip and fall. And the new Wallace Tower is really going to cut that risk up now. And we're excited about it. And I have a phenomenal construction team that includes the maintenance department and includes my office staff as well. But this is an exciting time for the Pittsburgh Housing Authority and we're transforming affordable housing in, in the city. When we're done, we're gonna have probably one of the most highest-performing housing authorities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And up until the nineteen seventies, Pittsburgh had the number one housing authority in Massachusetts. It was a phenomenal, we had CJ Durkin was the, the executive director from nineteen forties and Mr. Group was the chair. And they both passed away in the nineteen seventies, but they were the original founders of the Pittsburgh Housing Authority. It's an exciting time for us and we're giving back to the community. And I'm not sure, many of you may know people that lived at Wallace or currently live at Wallace. And when it's all done, you're not, you're not gonna recognize the living conditions they have. It's much improved.
How many units would be there?
A hundred and thirty.
And what does a unit consist of? Bedroom, living room and kitchen?
Yes, it's, it's not many. I believe it's a four hundred and fifty square feet. We have several ADA units. They're a little bit larger. But they were designed, the senior housing in Massachusetts, not for the World War Two generation, for the World War One generation. This is a generation that literally, a lot of them were farmers. They grew up without electricity, telephones. They were aging in the fifty, sixties and seventies when these properties were originally built. The World War Two generation in the seventies were middle-aged. They were not senior citizens yet. So yes, they are, they're not spacious. Under the program that we operate under, you pay one-third of your income for rent and you do not pay utilities. Any other questions?
Move project. Are you finished two thousand twenty-six?
I'm betting that the spring of twenty-six, it'll be completed.
But it's ongoing now.
Yes, we had the official groundbreaking October eighteenth, which was phenomenal. They started in late August. The city is investing a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of ARPA money because the ground floor of Wallace is gonna be changed. We're knocking out, I call them the tooth cuts. So the community room is gonna be expanded. We're gonna have a classroom. We're gonna have a medical clinic. We're gonna have offices where the tenants can utilize and have training programs. We're gonna have expanded washer and dryer laundry area and expanded offices. And, and the safety features are going to be phenomenal. There's gonna be, the fire department will not have to go into the building to check out fire alarms. There'll be outside access. And really how we got the money, it was originally budgeted at twelve million dollars, but the bids came in at twenty-two million. At the same time this was happening, the fire pump malfunctioned and we had to close the, potentially close the building down. And working with the fire department, the building commissioner, and with the mayor's office, we were able to convince the state that now is the time to come up with the additional ten million dollars and get this project done. So there's a joke about the, the old fire pump that maybe we should bronze it. It's a twenty-two million dollar fire pump. But I really want to thank, you know, Mayor Squalia, the fire chief, the building department, the, the city's housing and community development department for the ARPA money. It really was not just the housing authority that got us to this point. And I want to thank the city council who voted for the ARPA money a couple of years ago. This is going to be a GM for the community. And a lot of our, our residents, they come down on Main Street, they purchase stuff, they, they partake in the restaurants, they go to the library. So this is something we're reinvesting in the community. And I was at the groundbreaking for the library and I, I said to our, our new chair, Tom Hughes, that if you look around, within a walking distance around here, there's probably well over one hundred million dollars of investments that are going on right now. You have New View, you have the housing authority, you have the library, you have other private sector projects going on. It really is an exciting time to be in Pittsburgh. And I've seen a lot of progress in the last five years and I can see that continuing and I, I just can't wait for this project to be done to add, add more value to the city of Pittsburgh.
Any other comments?
What about the towers? But it means, how about that, the city owns the building on Winusnaught Road across from Dollar Tree Store? The, you know, was it manpower place?
That's not, that's not a housing authority building.
No.
No, but I mean, the city owns it. Why can't they make that into like a?
That was up for sale, I thought.
It was up for sale, but I, I don't think there were any.
There's somebody, there's somebody working on it. Only there, all the trucks, but I thought it was for sale and it got sold.
No, I, I think the city was retaining it, Bruce, as far as I know.
The housing authority is.
That's offices. It's all.
But you should really check out, as, as Doug said, the, the, the work that was done in the Canton Street area, Valley Street, that, that, it is, it is. And those people that live in there, they're, they're so happy that that renovation took place. I, I've heard, I've heard, I've heard from them on numerous occasions and they, they're very happy with, with the result.
I love you. Look at the outside real great. How about the inside where they live? I mean, was, was either applying to self-aiding, was plumbing to aid, electricity updated or?
Well, what we did, the new roof, the windows, siding, energy conservation efforts. But the beauty of it is that we got four ADA units in a property. We had no ADA units before on that location. And the grounds, the community room, it's a beautiful piece of property and it's a unique, I could, if I had three hundred of those, I could fill them tomorrow. Are they efficiency apartments? They're small for, really for single people, young and old. It's not senior housing, but if I had three hundred of those, I could, I could fill them tomorrow. There's such a demand for people who are. There's such a demand for people who are downsizing and for single people and, but those are, they go so fast. And we have a 10,000 waiting list, 10,000 person waiting list. And it's, it's a very asset and, you know, we recovered from 2019 and we continue to make improvements. We bought two brand-new trucks earlier in the year and I was adamant that they had to be Pittsburgh red. We rejected the blue. We have two other blue ones that were Leominster blue that we were going to get rid of hopefully in the next couple of months. But our maintenance staff, they wear uniforms, they look professional and, you know, we're an asset to this community and we want to continue to improve things. We want our senior housing to be the retirement choice for Pittsburgh residents who need it.
That's why I mentioned the, the city-owned building, Winusknott Road, is because it's a stone's throw away from that Green Acres like you have on that.
So.
That, that, that could be changed into, you know, some handicapped housing or ADA housing and like that because mostly other than the cellar floor where the maintenance stuff is, you know, it's got one floor and it's already got a ramp to get in there. You know, if they would renovate that, you know, the city would give them that, that would, they'll make that area look a lot better.
Well, for Green Acres and, and Green Acres was the first development for the Pittsburgh Housing Authority, which was founded in 1948, for the returning World War II veterans and World War I veterans. Normandy Road was for the Atlantic Theater and Leyte was for the Pacific Theater. And, and I thought I was a World War II buff, but I didn't know that Leyte was for the Battle of Leyte Gulf. It was the largest naval engagement in the history of mankind and Normandy, obviously out of, from D-Day. And we're going to be building a new admin community building behind Leyte. There's an open field and we're going to convert that open field into a recreational space for the residents. And we're going to have classrooms, there's going to be a daycare center. We're going to transform Green Acres into workforce housing. We want people to get back into work. It's the highest concentration, concentration of unemployment in Pittsburgh. And right, we, right now, we have no ADA accessibility, we have no classroom space, but our plan is to get the admin community building in that location and really break the cycle of poverty by giving people a chance to learn skills, gain employment, and we're going to see regulatory waiver where if somebody's income increases, they're not hit with a rental increase immediately. We want to phase that in. But I do, I do know about that building and that's a city-owned building.
There's other private-owned buildings that they haven't done nothing with for a while now. Notre Dame, Southern Oaks Street, St. Joe's School and Woodland and Thomas Street, St. Anthony School on Salem Street, and even the old, this is Superior Courthouse. I don't know what's going on with that, but that's, that's been empty forever.
I don't know if they're city-owned or privately owned.
Can we get the city to buy these places or to get the state to give us money to buy these places to convert them to housing? Because you just said you have 10,000 people waiting. Well, if we get all these empty buildings, large buildings, renovate them, buy them, renovate them, you know, that would knock you out of quite a few.
Is that something off the list on your list, Doug?
The courthouse is mired in a lot of code violations that are excessive to try to change the structure of the building.
Well, that's just courthouse.
Yeah, it's just a courthouse.
Is that a place?
The reality is the competition for funding for housing is extremely competitive. It's, and right now, I, to build a 400 square foot apartment's like $400,000. It's, but the competition, I mean, it took really five years to get Wallace Tower off the ground and we had the funding. We designed, bid process, it takes a long time to get something off the ground, but if you have the money, you can do anything. It's getting that source of money. It is good that the general court passed a, a $5 billion housing bond bill and that money will be slowly, is going to be released and who knows, maybe there's an opportunity to acquire more property and to renovate them.
Thank you, Doug. I guess we're nearing the end of our, our discussion here. I, I thank everybody for attending tonight's meeting and thanks to our presenters, Ryan and Doug. The next city council community meeting will take place on Monday, December 9th, 2024 at 6:30 PM, right here in the legislative building. And City Council Sally Craigan is going to host that meeting. So happy Thanksgiving to everyone and, and good night.